Kind of like being retired. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America. And to the government of your people. It spans one nation, under God, indivisible, with a religion just for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Here.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Here.
Commissioner Beeden?
Here.
Commissioner Dunn?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Here.
Chairperson Bowman?
Here. Uh, item three, additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add the blue meets green priority projects to the agenda, please.
Eleven A.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Approval of the agenda.
Motion, McConnell?
Support Baldwin.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item five, meetings of the previous, minutes of previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, main, uh, standing committee meeting.
Support. Rushing.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No proclamations. Consent agenda, items A and B, seven A.
Mr. Chair, and I move, uh, for the approval of items seven A and seven B on the consent agenda. Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Reports of standing and special committees. Going to start with Commissioner McConnell.
Um, I, I don't have a lot to report on, but we had a RISA school board meeting on Monday night, Monday evening, and it, it just makes me proud to be associated with some of the stuff that's going on, um, with the blue meets green, because we're in a school board meeting for the county, and we're talking about things, and the superintendent brings up some reports about a new childcare program that's going to, that we actually, um, voted to approve, that's going to be done at, at RISA, and, and it all kind of spurred from the blue meets green, because we have people that don't have childcare in the county, and it just, the injection of the unity with everything, it's surprising how far out that it goes, and how many people are, are using it, right? And, and it makes this work, and that's what does make it work, is that, um, anytime you try to run a program, and you're the, it's, that's why they gave up kings and queens, and, you know, went to other things, and I just, I like the program, I like the way it works, I like the way that everybody's involved in it, and, um, there's a lot of players, and, and I read about the stuff that goes on, and, and I'm just impressed. So I just wanted to say kudos. I, I think this is a, a great program that, and, and I give you guys, people that are doing it, credit for, for being there, so thank you. That's it.
Yeah, I actually did have a follow-up with Kevin on that, and I'll talk about that later in our, um, in our, uh, meeting. Georgia?
So, uh, today we had the SMCOG General Assembly meeting, and, uh, I think I was elected to the Regional Review Committee, and they actually oversee some of the grant funding, uh, or grants that are throughout southeast Michigan, so I'm really excited to start that. I don't know a whole lot about it yet, um, but there are some.
You were a non, you were a unanimous decision, by the way.
Did you vote no?
There was only three people for four positions, just for the record, so. We didn't have to find one more.
I still want. So, uh, but it'll get into the transportation alternatives program and different things like that, um, so that, that's going to be really exciting. It's going to be fun to kind of follow along with that and see what's happening throughout the, the region. Um, metro planning, marijuana is continuing to come up, communities are looking into that and how they can, uh, regulate within the different regulations. Medical marijuana has different rules from the recreational marijuana, and so every community is struggling with it a little bit, because we, we have a pretty big variance of how people feel about it throughout the county, so, um, that's been interesting, and then, um, in the last, in the last month, I think I, maybe we all received it, a, a letter from the St. Clair County GOP, so I attended their meeting and trying to follow along with some of the things. Lisa McLean just held a town hall, so I, uh, attended that, the other, uh, in Marysville, and so she was able to talk about some bills, and then I also attended the, um, just in the very beginning, but the, uh, St. Clair County Democratic Party meeting too, just to kind of introduce myself, here's, you know, uh, if you ever have any issues, you know, that kind of thing, give me a call, it'll stay on for the entire meeting, but, um, just to kind of do that outreach, and I think that Lisa McLean has been doing a nice job of that, so it's, um, you know, people are starting to finally come around to, okay, now what's happening. We're having conversations that don't revolve around COVID right now, and so I'm starting to see that uptrend of, uh, different, just conversations on, on bills that are important to people, so, that's what I've been doing. Thanks.
Lisa?
Well, since you haven't heard about COVID, you're right, um, we are actually seeing a spike right now, um, with the number of cases in our county. Um, our schools are, um, having to adapt to that change. I think those changes go into effect next week, um, so I, we just need to still be diligent, vigilant, and even though, uh, we are adjusting, and we're able to talk about new topics, um, I think it's important that we, um, you know, remain vigilant, and if you're able to get the vaccine, to sign up and get the vaccine, and kudos to the Health Department, um, for working as quickly through their waitlist as they can.
They had a great, um, their, uh, Saturday's clinic was over 500, and today on their live, they were talking about how they're getting more and more vaccines each week again, so it kind of went backwards, and now we're getting.
I don't know how many there were in Marysville yesterday, but that hall was full.
It was full.
The whole entire day from morning until night.
Yeah.
Parking lot looked like a huge reception going on, so.
It's, it's, kudos to them. It, it takes a lot to do a clinic. We do small ones at the hospital, so I know what it's, it's like to run a clinic. I can't imagine what the employees at the Health Department are going through to, to get it done, so kudos to them.
Yeah, it's awesome. Uh, just a couple of things about parks and rec. I attended the board meeting via Zoom the other night. Uh, the disc golf course will be done out at Columbus Park in June. There was a donor that donated the money for that, so it was quite nice, and the sand fest will not happen this year due to COVID, so, that's all.
David?
A couple of things. Uh, Mark Roberts, our road commission, I talked to Kurt Wester often, but Mark Roberts will be retiring next month, and he's just done a fantastic job for the county road commission, so, uh, I don't know if he needs proclamations, but I've probably talked to Kurt. Uh, he's done a fantastic job. He's always been jolly on the spot, and I think our road commission does a fantastic job. So, I wanted to, uh, say thank you to Mark, if he's listening, but, um, back to medical marijuana now, we will be having a special hearing and a public hearing on the 29th. We just had another meeting on the 15th this week, and our planning commission in Riley, uh, we will have an ordinance in place, uh, probably Monday, so after the public hearing, we'll be voting on that as a planning commission, and, uh, supporting to the St. Clair County Planning Commission. Uh, we're kind of considering going by that, because it's not required by law to have it from St. Clair County. We did have, uh, the attorney streamers who's very good at this. He also represents Columbus Township, and it's a very good ordinance, and, uh, and that just addresses medical marijuana, not commercials.
Dave, is it the same one that you sent out to me?
Oh, it's had slight changes.
Okay.
Uh, we have, and our, got, he, Strummer just really thanked our board for all the homework we did, because we had about 40 questions for him, and, uh, he redid, and he represents townships very well, and he really appreciated the input and, uh, changed the draft slightly and addressed some things, because part of in there is that we have a requirement that you have to have an annual inspection of property, so I asked, uh, the strummers if we could do that without a search warrant. He says, no, you, the short version. I'm not going to do all the legalese that he gave us, but short version, no. What you can do is, uh, pull their right to be a caregiver if they do not allow you on a property to do the inspection, make sure that they are in compliance with only 25% of this law goes to state law. 25% of your area can only be dedicated to medical marijuana.
Who would do your inspection?
Uh, we are currently, and I told you, Paul Wilson, uh, we are doing a special thing for him at the township, which I, uh, the township, I paid for the whole thing, because I was the one that hired Paul Wilson as ordinance officer. He was actually a drug officer for Sterling Heights, and he got hired when I was the township supervisor. He died of, uh, surgery from complications, but, uh, they are going to probably hire one next week, or the first, first part of next month at the full board meeting. They have 31 applicants for the ordinance officer.
Oof.
So, hopefully they pick a good one, and then, of course, the ordinance officer for any municipality, the ordinance officer is the one that does the enforcing or goes through the board first, uh, of course, but supervisor as the main person, but, uh, full board would vote on any enforcement letters and standard stuff for ordinance enforcement.
Okay. Mr. Van den Bosch?
I just want to thank Jeff for all the work he's done with us on this, the Marine City Marina program, because without his push, and it, as you all know, he pushes extremely hard, and we, we got, we've gotten through most of the five hours so far. We've got a little bit more to do, but I just, uh, what we've gotten done in three to four weeks compared to the last 15 years is nothing, so, it's, uh, it's been a good, uh.
And I've got that. I'm going to report out on that a little bit later there. That was what I gave to you, so, anything else? I'm going to take a pass. Um, citizens wishing to address the board, we have two citizens. Is Mr. Williams, Steve Williams, on the phone? He's not. Okay. All right, we will move on to Cole Wood, um, 5257 Mayville Road, field representative introduction for Lisa McLean.
Uh, sorry to take off my mask. Uh, hi, I just wanted to take a second and introduce myself. I'm Cole Wood. I'm the new agricultural field representative for Congresswoman Lisa McLean. I actually recognize you, Commissioner Baldwin, from the other day at the town hall. Uh, I focus primarily on ag, but I'll be going around to a lot of town meetings and county meetings as well, and, uh, if there's ever anything that you need, I wanted to open up a line of communication with everybody, I know, feel free to reach out to me, or if there's ever any questions on legislation, anything like that, that I can potentially help with, please do let me know. I know there's been a couple pieces of legislation that came up, sorry, that came up recently that, uh, do affect a lot of people, particularly in the county. I know there's been a new icebreaker put in place, so, uh, can quit, I'll borrow one Canada's, and, uh, there's also the Death Tax repeal act, which is going to completely remove the death tax, as well as the estate tax, um, and we're really hoping that'll pass. Um, if there's ever anything you guys need, feel free to reach out to me, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cole.
Thank you.
Uh, no unfinished business, uh, new business, eleven A, approval of county disbursements.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the February 2021 county disbursements in the amount of $19,775,116.98.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes. Uh, the commission on aging appointment.
I would make a motion to appoint Corinne Carell, District Four, to the commission on aging for the remainder of a three-year term expiring 12/31/23.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Uh, item C, Community Mental Health Board appointments.
This time, I'd like to move to reappoint Jackie Blythe, District One, Jessica Totti, District Three, and Edwin Premier, District Five, to the Community Many, Mental Health Authority Board, each for a three-year term expiring 3/31/2024. Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item D, the contract approval request for Axon.
I would make a motion to approve the agreement with Axon for a five-year term in the amount of $490,831.74 for in-car and body cameras for the Sheriff's Department.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman?
Yes. Item E, the contract approval request for Inner West Technology Group addendum.
I move to approve addendum C of the agreement with Inner West Technology for website development services, increasing the amount not to exceed $578,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman?
Yes. Uh, item F, the contract approval request for the Romine Group.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the agreement with the Romine Group for recovery coaching services for a term of 3/01/2021 through September 30th, 2021, in the amount not to exceed $55,417.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman?
Yes. Item G, the 2021, um, Slow No Wake Zone Enforcement Program Grant Application.
Mr. Chairman, I would move for the approval of fiscal year 2021, Sl- Marine Slow No Wake Zone Enforcement Program Grant Application in the amount of $27,937. Support.
One thing I would, uh, comment, the water. I live on the water in East China, and that's, I'm telling you, it's about three foot down right now from where it was last year. It was at the top of my break wall, top, and it is, so hopefully, um, hopefully it stays, and the, the slow wake, no wake thing will definitely be less of an issue.
I sit on a floodplain, uh, board that's made up from people from FEMA and our state National Flood Insurance Program and Eagle, uh, and we're actually having a meeting next week, but that's been a huge topic, in emails back and forth about where the, you know, where the water levels are, and we just had a request from somebody on the west side of the state, you know, what's Lake St. Clair at right now, because we, we help work on legislation for things like this, um, so I'll be interested to see what the rest of the state is looking like, but that's, it's good news.
Any, any indication, uh, six inches, a foot, I mean, any early?
Not so far, I.
Yeah, just keep posted. I just be curious. Thank you.
Absolutely, yep.
Um, it's just as a grant application, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item H, the Homeland Security Grant.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the security grant program for Operation Stone Garden grant agreement in the amount of $277,875.
Support.
Discussion. Remember the good old days when that thing was like two or three million bucks, wasn't it, Kerry? Um, any other comments? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Recovery High School Grant Agreement.
This time, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the grant agreement for the Recovery Support High School Program for a term of 1/1/21 through 9/30/21 in the amount of $150,000.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item J, uh, the contract approval request.
I would make a motion to approve the bed rental agreement with the Ottawa County Juvenile Detention Center for a term of October 1st, 2020 through September 30th, 2023.
Second. Question on the juvenile thing, is, are those numbers still down? Because I mean, at one time, our numbers were high. We had our own pod, we were doing our own program. Um, numbers got low, then we contracted out with McCollman at the time. Are, are we still seeing those numbers, I guess, down? Are they up, or I, I just haven't asked that question sometimes, even.
I believe the numbers are still lower than they were when we were operating the full facility. I can get more information, though, from Mr. McMillan if you'd like.
Nah, don't, don't worry about it. Just conversation sake. Um, anything else? Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman?
Yes. Item K, the Friends of the St. Clair River.
Mr. Chair, I'd move for the approval of the Friends of the St. Clair River Annual Stewardship Agreement in the amount of $30,850.
Support.
Discussion. Uh, roll call.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman?
Yes. Item L, the Goodles Meadow Grading and Seeding.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the contract to Kevin's Lawn Care in the amount of $29,524.40 for grading and seeding the Goodles County Park Farm Museum Meadow.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman?
Yes. Item M, the Park and Recreation Shared Services Agreement.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Port Huron for a shared Parks and Recreation Director Services for a term of 4/5/21 through 4/4/24 in the amount of $265,200.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing?
No.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
No.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman?
Yes. Item N, Resolution 21-02, North Channel Michigan Natural Trust Fund Grant Application.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 20-02 to submit a land acquisition grant application for the purchase of property near the north channel of the St. Clair River for development as a county park and, uh, commitment of, uh, county mileage funds.
Support.
A discussion. I know Bill Great tops in the room. I know he worked on that. Um, that, that particular house, if you go down there, it's kind of in the middle, I guess, out by the road in front of that park, and it really is the last, call it strategic piece, I guess, for the time being, that would help clean up that area around there. We acquired the Stevenson property. How many acres is the, the stills property, like eight or nine?
I don't know, 9.2.
Nine, nine-two, and then that lot is.
I think it's where you started.
Yeah, that, that, that lot, so we've been working with the owner, conversations with him down there. We wanted to get a trust fund application, and now, um, trust funds would award December 8th, um, for, if they were going to fund, and then funds are another, has to be done legislatively, September, October, kind of stuff to follow, and so these things are the 18-month warp speed, you know, so, that's what that's all about. Um, uh, just an application. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item O, the Smith Creek Landfill Cell Eight Construction Recommendation.
This time, I'd move to approve the agreement for the construction of Cell Eight C at the landfill to Raymond Excavating Company Incorporated in the amount of $175,576. Support.
Discussion. Matt is here, if you, yes, Matt?
Yeah, I was going to say you left a million dollars off somewhere.
Uh-oh.
I'm sorry, what's, what's the number?
What's the number?
I've got $175,576.
Should be a million seven.
Yeah, missing, missing it was a real.
If I'm missing a zero, then I'll change that to $1,755,760.
Sounds better.
Better number.
Lot better.
Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I would, uh, like for somebody, if they could make a motion, if I could abstain from voting on this. I work for Raymond Excavating.
I don't even know if you had, do you have to make a motion to have them abstain, or he?
It has to be approved by the board, yes.
Uh, motion for Duke to abstain.
I'll make a motion to.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go back to the original motion. Uh, roll call.
Commissioner, or Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Chairperson Bowman?
Yes.
I thought that, now that Duke worked there, that, that just was the lower price. That was a.
Doing us some favors.
Uh, Smith Creek Landfill Permit Modification Preparation. Matt, is that you?
Is there anybody on the Zoom tonight at all?
I can't see if they are.
Okay. All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I apologize. We were supposed to do this a couple weeks ago, um, but technical difficulties, so I'm here in person today. Um, real quick, um, if I can, this is an aerial of the landfill, which most of you are aware, but for our new commissioners, Mr. Van den Bosch and Ms. Beeden, that's an aerial. North is to the right. Um, we're about 265 acres of landfill property, and I just wanted to throw that up and then show you towards the south end, this is the Cell Eight C project area that we're going to be doing, um, this summer. Um, Cell Eight and Eight B were constructed a couple of years ago, we finished, and we're essentially going to build a soil berm around the edge of it and extend the liner system up the berm, so we can put more garbage in that area, so that's what Cell Eight C, and most of the soils required to construct that berm are coming out of the borough area immediately to the south, so, just wanted to throw that up there real quick. Um, the main reason for me being here is to discuss, um, our certified closed area in context of what our current, um, expansion permit has us doing, and a recommendation to the board for your buy-in on what I believe to be a better plan. So I'm going to give you a little overground, a little background, go through the options, what we're planning on doing, what I think we should do, what that financial implication of, and when we need to have a decision made or, or concurrence from the board. First, um, real quickly, again, for the, um, for the new commissioners, um, there's kind of two parts to the Smith Creek landfill. The first is the older, pre-engineered timeframe. Um, the northern portion of the landfill, um, we started filling back there. We, we didn't start filling. Waste was being brought into that area as early as the 50s. Um, it was originally a clay mine on that property, so clay was being mined to send to Port Huron to the Peerless Cement Company, so pits were dug, and they were out there in the middle of nowhere, so people started throwing stuff in, and the first stuff to go in was fly ash at the time, but the older section of the landfill was closed off in 1989, 1990, 1991 timeframe. We put a final covering on it, and no more waste has gone in that area, and development of the rest of the landfill has been to the south of that. Um, we're going to finish developing the southern end of the landfill this year, and we'll be filling in that southern end probably for about another five or six years. Um, but to completely fill to the grades that we're permitted to fill, to realize all the potential for airspace that we have, we have to do something on the north end, so we have to redevelop that in one way or another. So again, here's our site. All of the operations buildings and administrative buildings are up in the front of, are to the right on the north end of the landfill. Again, Eight C construction to the south. What did I just do? Okay. Technology. That's the active area I was referring to on the south end, and the certified closed area is that area to the north. It encompasses about 56 acres right now. This is the expansion area as currently described in our construction permit. You can see that it doesn't quite extend the limits of the northern green area. Um, part of that is because the older sections of the landfill were filled before there were restrictions on how close you could put a landfill to waterways, to residential drinking water wells, and those types of things. Today, we have setbacks from those features that we can't landfill any closer to, and that's why you see that it's not, it doesn't quite cover the entire green or the existing landfill right now. Um, we submitted an extension permit in 2013 that was approved by Eagle. In that permit, the plan was to take all of the old waste in that northern area, which is relatively shallow, exhume it, and move it into a lined cell in another portion of our. our landfill. And then we would take advantage of the remaining soils under that waste, dig deeper, reline in the northern area, and then fill the landfill up. We did that for a number of different reasons, which we can discuss, but that maximized the amount of waste we could ultimately bring into the site, which is the primary reason that we did that. We updated our business plan last year, and what we discovered when we reestimated the cost to do all that is that it was gonna cost a pretty penny from a capital standpoint to exhume that waste and move it and recompact it in a different part of the landfill. So, we thought, let's see if there's a better alternative out there. Part of that, and part of that decision-making progress required us to do some field investigation, which we did something called cone penetrometer testing, and I won't get into the details of that, but basically, we probed the old waste in the northern end. And what we found when we did that, that there was less waste in place in the northern end than what we had assumed for a number of years, to the tune of, I believe, about almost a million yards less than what we thought. It's shallower than we thought it was and more uneven on the bottom. The other thing that this testing told us was that the stability of the waste that was in place was sufficient to support filling on top with more waste as time went on. It was stable, and that was a very critical thing for us to know if we were gonna even think about overlaying it. So, we reevaluated our financial models with less waste in place and ran a comparison on to what we're planning in our permit to what I think we should do. So, we'll get into the options. The first option is waste relocation, as I described. That's the plan. That's what's in our permit right now. Again, it maximizes our airspace and maxes our revenue potential and gives us a little bit longer, the best site life. The concerns are that with the waste movement, there's a lot of leachate, a lot of liquid in that old section, which is another thing we found from that testing, a little bit more than we thought, as a matter of fact. And anytime you dig into a landfill that's been covered, you've got an odor issue, as you can well imagine. This waste is very, very old. To boot, we don't know what's in there, because we don't have documentation of that. That was all prior to the county owning the landfill and regulations being in place. It required documentation and record keeping. And as I mentioned, there's a very large upfront cost to do that work. So, what that entails, and I'll just give you a few graphics here. Again, this is our expansion area. It entails digging out a very substantial portion of the northern end. You can see that probably represents at least 40 acres of waste movement. And as I mentioned, the outside waste that's there would stay in place. Then, we'd put in a new liner system where we excavated. We'd fill more waste on top, and away we go. This is long-term, over the next 40 to 50 years. So, there's a red line there running up and down, cutting east to west. So, I'll show you what that looks like from a cross-section view. So, the existing clay cap that's on top of that waste, waste is represented in green here, would first be removed. Then, we'd excavate the waste, put it in a lined cell in the back end of the site. Then, with that remaining clay under there, which is, that represents the permitted grades on the bottom right now, we'd excavate that over time. We'd use that for development and cover on the landfill for future construction. Then, we'd install a new base liner system, and we fill to our permitted grades, and away we go. That's the current plan. For some of the reasons I've alluded to, I think there's a better option. So, what I'm recommending to you is that, oh, I just wanted to mention too, if I back up real quick, the amount of waste, or I'm sorry, the amount of clay that's available under that waste mass that we excavated out is close to a million yards of soil. So, it's a good amount of soil that we could have available potentially for future use. Some of it is contaminated. Most of it's good. What that really would turn out, we wouldn't know until we tried to do it.
Matt, so that first option has already been approved by Eagle?
That is in our permit today.
That's, we're permitted for that right now?
That's correct.
Okay, and now we're gonna see a new presentation on what we would like to do?
What I would like to do.
Okay.
Hopefully, it's what you want to do. And that's waste overlay. We don't have, we have to take out much less waste and move it. We can manage the leachate in that old section through our existing system without having to do additional effort to get that leachate out of an excavation and treated for a much higher cost, I might add. Much less potential for odors in the area, and much less potential of running into things in there that we would have to handle. You know, it's quite possible we could come into a stash of drums that have been landfilled. And once you see a drum, you gotta stop. You gotta check yourself, figure out what it is, to see if you have to do something special to handle that waste. Hazardous waste is extremely expensive, and the capital cost is ridiculously small relative to the waste relocation and to the scale that we currently have permitted. The only real concern is that we have to do a permit modification to change the plan with Eagle. And it does result in an overall loss of net airspace to the tune of almost 900,000 cubic yards. For comparison purposes, we have about 18 million left to fill under our current permit, so we would be losing about 5% of total airspace doing this. Again, I'm gonna give you the same graphics we had for the relocation, but we'll do it for the overlay. The same expansion area footprint, only just a very small part of excavation there, relatively speaking. That's actually partially a new expansion to the landfill horizontally to the west, which is in our permit, but that's all the excavation we do. We grade the surface of the existing waste to get the grades we need to overlay it with liner. New liner system goes on, and of course, it doesn't go on all at one time. This is gradual over years. New waste goes on, and we're done. Same kind of thing. So, again, we'll cut that same cross-section. We'll start out with the same thing here. First thing is to remove the clay cap. Second thing is to regrade the waste as opposed to move the waste, and you can kind of see just some shaping, basically, is what we're doing and balancing. Then, we take that little expansion area I noted out, that excavation there, that soil does get excavated and very little waste, and then we overlay that footprint with a new liner system. Then, over time, we fill the grade with the same ultimate grades as we have in our current permit. That's what that looks like. Any questions about any of that before I move on?
How many more years of life would that give us?
By overlaying versus what we have, the net difference being about 900,000 yards, that probably amounts to about two years, I think. So, we're talking another 50 years of landfilling. So, it's a trade-off.
Yeah, right now, our high, we haven't ever hit 400,000 where...
Of, yeah.
Yeah, so we're three, three to 350, right? So, if you're losing 900, that's three years' worth of life for a lot of money.
Yeah, potentially a lot of money.
Keep in mind, for the other commissioners that don't know, we own 72 acres next to the land that butts up. We own, I don't know, four or five houses out there. We've been picking off properties around our landfill also, so we do have quite a bit of additional land around it.
Yeah.
Matt, is there any jeopardy of applying for a new permit and then have them not? I mean, we've already got one that's been approved.
Correct.
So, does that always stay here, and then this one goes out there, and if it gets approved, then this one goes away? Or what if they say, now we want to look at something totally different between the two? Is there any chance of that?
Well, the state will never say, why don't you guys go do this? They're reactive to what is put in front of them, first of all. Second of all, we've had preliminary discussions with the state on this concept.
Okay.
Things, it looks like it's, it isn't a novel idea in Michigan. There are a lot of landfills who have overlaid old waste, so I don't think we'll have a problem getting it permitted. So, we did a financial analysis to compare these two paths forward, and we limited that analysis to just things impacted by essentially the waste relocation and what that meant. We didn't look at the greater picture of the landfill revenue over time and the rest of that kind of thing. So, we limited our revenue analysis just to the two options and the differences between them. And what we came up with, this is distilled down and summarized, obviously, way down. If you want more information on the costs that went into coming up with these summarized numbers, I'm very happy to share those with you. You can see that the upfront costs are significantly different between the two options. When we reevaluated what it was gonna cost to actually relocate the waste versus regrade the waste and just overlay it, almost $37 million, we're estimating to relocate all that waste over a time period of probably 10 to 15 years. You can see the gross revenues of, which are represented primarily by incoming waste tipping fees, are much higher than what it is for the overlay, and that's simply because we can bring in more waste. We don't lose, still have that airspace. But when you do the math versus the cost and the revenues, financially, it's kind of a wash. It's actually a little bit better for the overlay option, but, you know, if you're talking about 4 million years over a quarter century, or, I'm sorry, $4 million over a quarter century, it's nothing to sneeze at, but it's not hugely significant.
I think the comment you made earlier, though, when you start digging that stuff out, man, what are you gonna find, right? You run into, you know, something bad.
Well, and that's...
The downside's way higher.
Right.
The potential downside.
The potential problems, in my personal opinion, I agree, are huge, and the potential liability you're gonna run into. The, this total cost to do relocation doesn't include any additional odor control measures. It doesn't call, it doesn't include handling any hazardous waste we might discover and getting that to where it has to go. It does account for the leachate we're gonna have to manage and pay for, but, yeah, there are a lot of what-ifs with the waste relocation, quite honestly. And the other side benefit that I don't have a slide for is our GASB liability. If we change our permit to this option, actually gets better. We actually save about $1 million in our liability when we make the switch. So, for what that's worth, that's, basically gives us more money to do stuff with when we need to. So, when do we need to do this from a permit standpoint, if the board agrees that it's a good path forward? Pretty soon. Our waste volume last year was, in our COVID year, was actually 15% more, higher. It was higher than it was in 2019. The big part of that was that big special waste job we had towards the end of the year that kind of really kicked us above, but that's a good thing. And as I was just mentioning to Commissioner McConnell before the meeting, we've contracted for additional Canadian waste. We're not gonna double the amount of Canadian waste, but we'll at least increase it by a good 50% or more.
One thing too with the commissioners, a lot of the waste streams that we do get from Canada are a lot of the organic waste streams.
Absolutely.
When you talk about waste, you got construction and demo. You throw that in a hole, forget it. It's their million years. We don't chase that. There's some, certain things actually work really well in our bioreactor, so we're very selective on the particular waste streams that we actually are bringing in, so.
Yeah.
And if you equate it to trucks, what are we, around eight to 10 to 12 trucks a day, maybe?
Last year, we were probably bringing in seven or eight a day.
So, it's not...
We're already, we're already 12, 13 a day this year.
Just don't, it's not like there's 200 a day that are rolling in there. It's...
Right, correct.
Pretty minute number.
Yeah, they're big, you know, they're the big transfers, so there's a lot of volume there, but from a number of truck standpoint, it's quite small. The reason why I'm talking to you now and not next year about all of this is because if we remain under our existing permit because of those factors and the additional waste and all that, we're gonna have to start that waste relocation work probably next year. We might be able to wait to 2023, but it's probably gonna be 2022, and we're gonna have to start spending that money. You can see on the overlay, since we're not filling up the new cells and back with that waste, we've got more time to stay there and bring in the, you know, incoming waste to fill that. So, the little bit of waste relocation involved with the overlay, and that's primarily over in that excavation area that I showed you, wouldn't need to start happening until 2024, 2025 timeframe, and it's much less significant than it, than the, than doing the full waste relocation. But to do it, we need a permit modification approved from Eagle, and we need to be able to take that to them for their consideration soon, so we don't get caught with our pants down, having to dive into this bigger-picture waste relocation project, quite honestly. That's why I'm here now presenting this. So, I'm recommending to the board and would appreciate your concurrence and approval on overlaying versus doing a massive waste excavation and movement project. Lower capital, overall improved financials a little bit. We save ourselves from unknowns, the liabilities associated with those unknowns, and the costs associated with those unknowns. And we need to do it fairly quick, so I'm respectfully asking for a decision tonight to move forward with the permit mod to this change.
So, the odors. We brought some waste in from a closed landfill a couple years ago, July, August area.
Horrible.
You couldn't, bad. I couldn't even imagine cracking open that hole, so.
You'd do 50 acres of it.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
No way.
And then it becomes 100 acres.
No, there's a lot to it, and we knew that all along. Don't get me wrong.
I think it's solid. I mean, one thing I do know quite a bit about is a landfill, ironically, but any other questions or any comments for Matt at all, and his thoughts?
So, you're looking for a motion just to approve the overlay program?
So, he can go get a permit. So, yeah, a motion so he could go...
Yeah, I don't think technically, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't do this without folks knowing what I would like to do and being on board with it.
Well, I appreciate all of the background. I mean, these are just not things that I would have known from any of my prior things I've done in life. So, it was very thorough, and it's good information, because it is, it's one of those things that we all kind of take for granted, but it's right here in our county, so if there's anything, you know, completely trust that you're gonna take it into a route that has a better endgame, and I think that's what you're asking for today.
That's basically it. I think, I think it's, I'm 100% convinced it's the best path forward, so.
Okay. What do you, you want to do, a motion?
I would make a motion that we have Matt send the application for the re-permitting to Eagle.
I'd support that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Commissioners, thank you very much for your time tonight. I appreciate it. Nice job. You got rid of all those graphs that we could never file.
Well, if you don't get older and don't learn a few things, you're not doing it. Well, if you don't get older and don't learn a few things, you're not doing it right.
Resolution 21 dash zero three to continue the state of emergency.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 21 dash zero three to continue the declaration of so-called emergency for the county of St. Clair.
Support.
Carrie, you want to explain a little bit? I know we've had multiple, you know, conversations with Justin, why do we need to continue this? When do we get out of this, on and so?
So the main driver for requesting this resolution is the legislation allowing boards and commissions to meet under the Open Meetings Act for any reason expires on March 31st. So by the county extending our state of emergency, it not only covers you as a board, it covers all boards and commissions within the county. If we were not to extend it and a board wanted to meet locally, a township or a city, they would have to have their own local state of emergency to continue to meet remotely. This also covers our planning commission, our library board and all our other boards that would prefer to still meet remotely, so it would be an option. Also, this is being recommended by Michigan Association of Counties, that counties do extend the state of emergency because at this time it appears that there will be no extension of the date in the legislation. A couple of bills have been introduced, but the information that we've been hearing is it's not likely they'll pass. And that could change next week. But for what we know today, Mac is recommending we do this. And Justin West Miller, our emergency management director, also is recommending the extension.
And this would allow, so if I had to quarantine for some reason, this would allow me to still participate in our meeting. I mean, I think we all prefer to meet in person, right? This is just a better way to do business. But if I had to, to participate remotely, I can only do it if we extend this.
That's correct. Another concern with full meetings are the Miosha rules do only allow 25 people at an indoor gathering. So if we had an instance where we had more than 25 people here, then we would be in violation of the Miosha rules. So public participation can still be required to be remote if the board chooses or public can participate in person or a hybrid.
Be quite honest, we've had some commissioners in the past that have served with that. It's kind of travel time of the year, too. Greg, you're a great example, you know, you, you get an opportunity to participate now, you know, and, um, so, I mean, it works on that front, too. Remember, we used to have to call around, okay, who's going to be there? Man, I got two or three guys who need to be on vacation and, you know.
Yeah, and one of my municipalities is, is all for this just because they're, they're going to continue to meet this way. That's, that, I mean, that's their call, their choice, but, so it's important for them to.
Well, and just, I mean, like you say, what, you may not have COVID, but maybe one of your kids do.
Right.
And they come home from school and now you're quarantined, so you can't come to the meeting. So until this is all done, it just makes sense.
Sure does. David?
A couple of things. Now, this isn't going to affect the township, this affects the county.
No, it allows the townships to continue to meet remotely unless they adopt their own state of emergency. So this, this is kind of a blanket for the entire county.
And this is for three, an extension of three months?
Correct, to the end of June?
Yes.
Yes, through the end of June?
Yes.
Um, because I'm more for the, Riley's already made a decision that we're having our meeting. The last public, uh, planning commission was the public and township would be. I think I could support a month, but three months, uh, I think it'd be very easy to do a resolution by month.
This isn't mandatory that-
It doesn't require them to meet.
This doesn't require them, it allows them to, but it doesn't force-
This is gonna, this is gonna, just so you understand it, for the county, is this going to require us for three months?
It doesn't require anyone to meet remotely, it allows you to meet remotely if you choose to.
Okay, what about public coming to the county?
That's, so that we're limited to the 25 based on something completely different.
So we could still have 25 people coming here?
25 people, including commissioners and staff.
Okay, can be in attendance?
Yes, yeah, it doesn't-
Next three months?
Whether, no, whether we're doing this or not, 25 people.
Right, I understand that. But if you have an open, uh, 25 people can be there. And this is going to just allow Zoom, this is gonna-
It's going to allow 25 people?
Coming to the public meetings.
Correct.
With this medical marijuana, we're going to have a, and just so I understand it correctly, uh, we're going to have a public hearing on the 29th. And we really want the public there to give us their opinion because this is correctly going to affect residents of Riley Township. So we want as many people there that can, you know, legally be there and have their opinions made.
25.
25, yeah, so it's 25.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
25, you're still limited to 25 regardless of a state of emergency. There are two, those are under two separate numbers.
You couldn't have 100 people show up.
Right, I know. I doubt we have 25, you know, everybody told him Riley is much smaller. That would still allow public, like, we wanted people to come to the county. We can have up to 25 of us, we can have 25 here.
Correct, the only thing, this is just allowing boards the option to meet remotely. There's no requirement that they have to meet remotely. But if a commissioner chooses to participate remotely with this continuation, they can, but-
So this is just so the elected officials can participate remotely? And also, we have our tech people, they can do it remotely over the phone?
Well, tech people can participate anywhere because they're not covered by the Open Meetings Act. It would just be the officials up here. You would not be able to participate remotely if, once this expires, if we don't extend it. But there's no requirement that you must be remote and that public can attend.
So.
Yeah, so all it really does is, you know, we can still meet like this.
Allows Zoom.
And it, but it allows Zoom if you chose to. So if all of us got exposed tomorrow, we could still have a meeting if we had to.
This still allows public to be present?
It, it doesn't prohibit that at all, no, no.
Doesn't affect public coming to the county meetings, township meetings for the county?
But just limited at 25, still?
Right, I understand.
Yeah, but that, yeah, this is separate from that. It just, so if you had a township, Riley Township preferred to meet remotely, it will allow them to do that.
That, well, they, they-
I, I get it. But, but there are, you know, out of all of the communities in the, in the county, there are some who prefer it. Or like the metro planning or a library board, there are some who would prefer to meet remotely. So it just gives them that option.
Well, the IT for the county is much better than Riley when we have. You better not have two people talking at one time. And everything else, and then hold on, shout out to everybody.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it can last three, four hours for a, a meeting and sometimes just everything's table until the next one.
Yes, so nothing in this resolution says you have to meet remotely, nothing in this resolution even promotes meeting remotely. It just allows it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? Yeah, we did. I didn't remember who did the second.
I, I think I did.
Yes, you did.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I, those opposed?
Opposed.
Um, so item R, the blue meets green. So we had our planning meeting, when, when did we have that? That was last week, last Friday, Carrie?
Yes, Friday.
Uh, we had 75 participants. I know I had forwarded the email out to all the commissioners. They had, actually, it was a little different this year. They had everybody videotape their presentations previously and they were anywhere from six to 10 minutes talking about the different projects. Actually liked it better, to be quite honest, because you could watch a presentation over and over. If there's something you missed, you could kind of go back and forth. So everybody got an opportunity to score out the projects that, um, there, I'll even back up. So these are the projects that had made the shortlist that were, that were previous vetted. There was probably 30 different things. The list was then cut down. And then these are the ones that it actually got scored on. As you can see, the Marine City Marina Project scored out number one. It was very interesting to listen to some of the comments. You know, like James Freed was one of the biggest advocates for the Marine City Marina Project. You know how the additional marinas, just how it brings people to the area, they'll get ancillary business, so on and so forth. So it was pretty interesting hearing the different outside perspectives. In front of you is agreement that Six Rivers Land Conservancy is working on with the city of Marine City. Tonight, there is a, actually, the meeting doesn't start till 7:50, so Cheryl just texted me. For the public hearing that actually Dave and I have to be part of to hopefully move it to the next step. There is a grant application that will be due by April 1st. Property that is identified, there was actually three different properties. If you look on the back page, it has the aerial. If you look in the upper right-hand corner, that is where the, currently the docks are located. There's three parcels there. It's really the, the house and then the vacant piece. And then the smaller one at the very top is not the piece that's for sale. If you look at some of the grant requests, page, I guess, page two, front page, the amount of the grant request, the city match amount, total estimated project cost, total estimated city costs, 134,000. To be quite honest, 134,000 is probably a little bit of a heavy lift for the city to, to weather that on their own. I am meeting with some of the foundations tomorrow. I would think that, you know, the county in some capacity, whether it's demoing a house or, you know, some parks and recs, if we had to participate, you know, somewhere along the line. This problem when these good projects come to smaller communities, smaller communities just don't have the capacity to, to, to take it all on, right? I'm not advocating that we write the check for 134,000. But if we can pass the proverbial hat between some counties, some foundations, some others, that I think we really have a good chance of making this a reality. We will know the grant application's going to go into April 1st, we're going to talk about it tonight. The thought is getting a piece, getting appraisal on this property right now. Go out and get somebody that would be a DNR qualified person to appraise that. So you're going to know if you're in the ballpark with it. We feel pretty comfortable that the numbers are right, it's not a big piece and looking at the stuff. But you never know, you could be, you know, way off and then you got to make up the shortfall on this. Kind of, you know, it's been put together pretty quick, five weeks or so. And Dave and myself have attended a bunch of meetings in Marine City. And I just thought it was kind of interesting to see how it ranked in the blue meets green priority projects. As you well know, when things go on the list is my favorite line, this isn't my bad idea, this is 75 other people's bad idea. So if we, if we have to get engaged and involved somewhere along the line, that nobody's going to shish kebab you just because this is, this is on the list. Um, if you look at the countywide broadband strategic plan, had conversations with, oh, Kevin Miller yesterday. I know Bill Greitner's been on that board a long time. They're working with a group of, it's a private-public partnership. They just received some substantial grant. It was, it was three, four, five million kinds of stuff. So there's monies that are moving there to help serve some of the underserved areas. We have an economy, it's just some places, I mean, you just, you can't get, you know, can't make anything happen. Expanded workforce training center, that's really being driven by some of the new companies that are locating in St. Clair, looking to participate in a, in a workforce training center. That's nothing that would really come back to the county. COVID vaccine planning, that's more public awareness, get the information out, those types of things. That's obviously a big priority because till we get, you know, till we get people vaccinated, I know you're not going to get everybody, but until you get people feeling comfortable to get out and re-engaged, I can tell you, being in the fitness business, I have probably a third, and I underestimated it, but I have arguably a third of my customer, customer base, they are, they are not back. My older morning crowds, I mean, that used to be there, nonexistent, you know? And I concede directly and it hits to my revenue, too. So I mean, so if I'm taking that, you got to imagine bars, restaurants, you know, everybody else. We just had our big St. Patrick's Day event in St. Clair, perfect weather, yada, yada, yada. Dave was down there, not that busy. I mean, it would normally be-
Oh, yeah.
Way busier, you know? So that's just how deep this thing runs. Increasing childcare options, that there again, you, we talked about RISA, spoke with Kevin, they're going to get people trained. Some of the childcare options, again, are some of those, working with some of the different companies to fund a portion, you know, of this. Somebody like RISA would be the one that would oversee these childcare opportunities. There again, that's not a county money thing, you know, there's, there's other, you know, private-public partnerships with it, you know, with the RISA leading the cause and stuff and could go out into some of these other communities and open. When we get down, we'd usually take Five Wadams to the Volca Trail, we've been trying, working on that forever. That's trying to get a, and I, I know Stephanie from DT's working on that Forest Talent Attraction website. That's just something that the DEA submitted, New Performing Arts Theater, that's part still of the Stage Festival that the Vertons are working on, they're working on a new theater down in St. Clair. East China redevelopment plan, probably a little bit ahead of itself, but it has to do with the entire waterfront redevelopment of DT, which is a big thing eventually, don't get me wrong. It's probably more of a big thing in, you know, five years from now kind of stuff when the plant does close and, you know, what are they going to do with those properties down there? But this is, uh, that's the, that's the list of priority projects. And kudos to Marine City for coming to the top. But I think it's kind of neat when you see people from all around the county understand the significance. And it was a big tourism compete, you know, tourism component. Because there's no reason, this isn't throwing stones, but I'm an avid voter, there's absolutely no reason for me to come. I, I can't pull my boat and park in Marine City. There's no places that, you know, you, you're able to do that and that. I just think about how big that is for the city of St. Clair, to be able to pull in, hit those dining docks and do all that stuff, you know, just, so.
Who's working on the grant application from-
Six, Six Rivers.
They're, they're putting, so, do they have any kind of feel for it? Because that's a, you know, it, it can be a real tough grant to get, but it could be, do they have any?
Uh, so it's $3,000 for them to write the grant application, it's got to be in by April 1st. They would know by December 8th if the award is going to happen. Like I said, we're going to talk about tonight about going forward and getting the, getting the appraisal done because we've got some willing sellers that are down to the controls, been great to deal with. But at the end of the day, you want to know if this deal is going to move forward or not. So spend the 3,500 bucks, whatever it is, on appraisal to get this thing out of the way to actually even know if you can go to step B. That's to be determined in about 20 minutes from now, what, but it seemed like, uh, six to one was the last vote to, to move it forward, so.
Good.
I would just like to thank Laura Scott, she put a, a great presentation on for Marine City. I mean, it was very well done. I did the same presentation and came in night, uh, eight years ago, so. Get on board, don't fall off the plane, and if it didn't work so well, her puns must have been much better.
Do you have a motion for this?
Uh, no, that's just the information. Moving on, administrator's report.
Just a couple of things this evening. Earlier this week, myself, along with Buildings and Grounds and IT, attended a pre-construction meeting for some roadway construction that's going to affect our campus. The city of Port Huron is redoing McMoran Boulevard. And the section between the courthouse and the library will be closed for a period of time. So the city has been involving us in the planning process to make sure we still have smooth operations and that our fiber line that runs under the road there, that everything is taken care of. Next week, Matt Williams and I will be participating in the first PFOS work group with the Michigan Association of Counties. It's the first meeting, so we're not sure where the discussions are going to go. I know our landfill and, along with our consultant CTI have done a lot of work on this already, so we'll see where we are relative to some of the other municipalities. But we certainly want to have a seat at the table if we have the ability to influence any of the regulations or legislations and how it may affect us. And the last item I wanted to touch on was the revenues coming into the county under the American Rescue Plan. I know some of you have been receiving inquiries and different items. It is a significant amount of money. Right now, it, it's estimated to be just under $31 million coming to St. Clair County and approximately $63 million coming to all municipalities in the county. There's very little guidance on this legislation. In fact, it's about a paragraph long and a four bullet points on what it can be spent on and what it can't be spent on. What we do know is in the coming months that there will be the technical guidance that will come down. When they say you can use it for necessary water, sewer, infrastructure, broadband improvements, we suspect those things will be further defined on those different categories. So once we get that further clarification, I would suggest perhaps maybe the board has a workshop to discuss the best uses of this, these funds going forward. One thing I do want to caution on is last time we did receive money through the CARES funding under the previous round, we had about $1.4 million that came to us, it flowed through the state. But unfortunately, as part of that, the state withheld one of our revenue sharing payments of $920,000. So 65% of the revenue we got was backfilling, of the CARES funding was backfilling revenue the state took away from us. We do receive about $4 million a year in revenue sharing. So if they do something similar, withhold all of that, 16 million of it could be needed just to backfill that revenue. So we've also been in discussions with Michigan Association of Counties. That's certainly a worry of all the county administrators since our revenue sharing is 100% statutory and there's no guarantee, constitutional guarantee of it. So they will be advocating on our behalf. However, there's still a- it. So they will be advocating on our behalf. However, there's still a lot more information that needs to come out, um, in details on how this can be used before we can really come up with a firm plan. But as I find out information, I will be passing it along and sharing it. There are a few other provisions in that bill that could affect us. Um, still going through everything, a couple other funding things that could be available potentially for libraries, um, some extensions to the Families First Act. So we're still making sure we're going through all the other requirements too, in addition to those funds available.
Questions for Carrie on that at all?
One, one comment. You got a great contractor doing that job over on McMorans.
Okay, so any issues with that fiber line or water interruption?
Yeah, um, because I've already looked through all the figures, basically, and, uh, roughly the six townships I represent are going to be, if you average it out, 350,000 each. And you're going to be getting a detail of what it can and cannot be used for, but that's a pretty good windfall for the townships that I represent. Now, if it's going to be for the waterways and culverts and I don't know if that will be in the, what they're going to be allowed to use it for, because they're not going to be able to cover all anything for COVID or that's going to come near to covering that payroll or anything like that.
Oh, well, so it can, it's also used for mitigating COVID, for economic recovery, and to replace lost revenue. So it's, it's not just for infrastructure. It's definitely for COVID mitigation and economic recovery as well.
Okay, I'll talk to you privately, but I'm trying to see where they get a loss of revenue from their tax, their tax base hasn't decreased, so their revenues are pretty consistent from previous years.
Some governmental agencies took a pretty good hit, like City of Port Huron's got the income tax, you know?
I understand City of Port Huron, the town, rural townships, they're not going to have the cost that a city would.
Yeah.
But this is a four-year deal, right? So this is spread out over four years. So it's not like you're going to get 368,000 a year for four years. If they got, if Riley gets 368, they have four years to spend that money.
Right.
But also could be a, you know, if they, if they do get matching funds, you know, they might get shorted on their matching funds, so they may need that.
Senator Peters held a, um, conference call Monday, I think it was Monday night.
Yeah, Monday evening.
Through SEMCOG and kind of went over some of those things and, and basically said, there is so little guidance on where this is. I know it's going to come out, but please, you know, email his office at SEMCOG to see if you had a very specific question for your municipality, um, because they're digging through that. But one of the things I found interesting was county money comes direct. Municipality money is going to come, they have to, it funnels through the state, and you only, and you get 50% of it upfront. So we'd get potentially 50% of that within 60 days. The state of Michigan will get the rest for the city, county, villages within 60 days. Then they have another 30 days to disperse that to the county. So you're, or I'm sorry, to the townships. So you, you might be looking at closer to, and up to 90 days for 50% of that, and then the other 50%, I think had to be dispersed by the end of this year.
Um, at, at least one year after your first disbursement.
Okay. And, and then you have four years to spend it. So it sounds like there's a lot of clarification that needs to come out.
Well, our congressman rep here is, uh, if you could give us some, I guess, uh, get us some information on that if you can, uh, that way I can forward it to my six townships because I've already gave them kind of the figures of what potentially is coming their way. And, you know, it could actually be a draft where they lose money if they try to forecast for the whole, and they lose revenue.
Right. So like Fort Grashit is slated to get over a million, but if their, if their revenue sharing is withheld because of that, then they're going to break even.
Yeah.
So they're not actually getting something.
We're going to need some guidelines for them.
Pot.
Where they go and try to spend it.
Yep. I think that's coming.
Anything else, Carrie?
Nope, that's all I have this evening.
Well, administrator, uh, the motion to, for administrator's report. She even file, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Miscellaneous business. I've got one item. Does anybody have anything? I'm going to read you this text. This pains me because this is two in one week. Just got another, uh, this is from Dan Casey. Just got another RFI, 400 acres plus with rail, 5,200 jobs, 3.4 billion dollar investment automotive. We don't have it, two big ones in one week. We had another 150 acre site that came before us in the EDA, and we had nowhere to submit for it. It's a reality of that we're dealing with. So when you hear about monies, and I know I've talked about it, infrastructure, I mean, we, we do not have any large parcels that have water, sewer available. I'm not even talking in, in county's ownership. I'm talking private guys. So, um, if we want to get serious with this thing, we got to really seriously look at that. Because, because the township's not going to be able to do it. You know, I mean, they, they got three, 400 grand. That's not going to put water and sewer, you know?
Well, I did bring up the thing that they put the new sewage, whether it be the capability over by him at Birkenstock's property there. He has an awful lot by the address with it. They have rail, they got the power lines, and potentially already have a sewer replaced. Because, well, I forget how many years ago Toyota was in the market to do that.
If there's some sites out there, Matt, please let us know. Ready to go sites too. So I will tell you, and I, it's nothing that I haven't spoken openly before, um, 26 mile road corridors, the one that constantly pops up that people are looking at, proximity to 94, proximity to the workforce, you know, all that stuff. It just, and if you look at where big tracts of land are still available, there are big tracts of land along, you know, that over there. So we just.
It's going to need some investment to get there.
Yeah. Oh, no, we're not talking chump change. We're talking big money. Actually, I mapped it out and, you know, I mean, this, these are, this is a heavy lift, but are we going to play in this arena or not? Because it's, you know?
Well, because it's an investment that then comes back, right? So even for that local municipality, if you've got, you know, your, your pot, whatever you're spending each year is still just big. And if you've got more taxpayers into that because somebody has built something, or you've got more people living there who now you need to build a subdivision to handle these people, they will see the money back quick. So it's, it's almost that education piece to get to me.
A lot of these things you can set up a perpetuating deal is kind of, it's not, it's same as kind of a TIF district. Dan Casey can explain a lot better, but basically you could do an overlay along that 26 mile road corridor where the county would be, be able to repay yourself. The industrial park in Port Huron is very similar, um, with that. It's a constant money going in, uh, money going out, money coming back. And as they replace the coffers, they're able to do more infrastructure. So, so if we're going to have conversations about how we're going to, you know, spend our 31 million, infrastructure's going to be top, top of the mind for me, but with also repayment method. I just don't think we would want to go out and.
Oh, sure.
You know?
Similar to like a brownfield repayment program.
Yeah. So we will have lots of conversations. I did not put the down payment on the helicopter just for the record. So, uh, adjournment?
Uh, first I need to, uh.
Receive.
Motion to receive and file packets.
Support.
Sorry.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Adjournment?
Support.